Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us or watching from home. We want to welcome you to the August 22 School Board Meeting of Manatee County School Board. Want to first bring this meeting to start with our district vision. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. So with that is, as we go through our meeting, we'll make sure we remember that as we make the decisions we need for the good of the district. Invocation is next. So, Mr. Chablinsky, you want to come on up with the Youth for Christ? If you want to join us in standing for the invocation, also the pledge.
Father, we give you thanks for this moment, a chance just to be still and enjoy your peace. Father, we look at this school year with excitement, also a little bit of heaviness as we know it's a great responsibility in caring, educating, and guiding our children and teenagers. And we come together and we pray for wisdom, for our new superintendent, for the school board, Lord, the sermon, and just strength, Lord, as they make decisions to guide our teachers and the staff and the students this year. All to your glory, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, moves us to item number six, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the August 22, 2023 Agenda, updated August 18, 2023, and posted to the district website. Lot of the Agenda Amendments were getting the minutes put up and things like that that we didn't have time for before the seven-day window. So, approval of the agenda?
Removed.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda. Are you not in Granicus?
I'm voting manually, please, for right now. Thank you.
So that passes five to zero. Item number seven, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong?
Good afternoon, Chair Choat and Board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board meeting of August 8, 2023, and the school board workshop on August 11, 2023.
So moved.
A second.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments about the minutes? No? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes from August 8 and August 11 workshop.
Take care of me, please.
And she is in a yes. That passes five to zero.
Of course, when you're in a hurry, you can't get through.
It's all good. These are the easy votes. Brings up to item number eight, student celebrations. Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members, and Dr. Weisong. The good news tonight is that our students, our approximately 55,000 students, are back in our schools and great to have them finishing up the ninth day of school for this school year. So, we're off to a good start. So, we want to venture into the past and take a look at nine days ago and just show you a little bit about what the first day of school was like.
At 5:30 this morning, all of our school board members and our district leadership team assembled to give a positive send-off to our drivers when they left the compound at 5:30.
Yes, ready!
When they see district administration and district staff coming out to support them, especially on the first day, they really do appreciate it, and it's special for them.
And then after we finished waving to the buses, our leadership team then split up and headed out to schools. And my role this morning was I went to a bus stop for Palmetto Elementary and greeted parents, thanked them for choosing their local public school, and then I got on the bus with the students.
And we are taking great care of them.
Yes, we are.
Enjoyed that ride with them and then right into Palmetto Elementary for the start of the school day.
Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Come on in, good morning. Shoo! How are you?
You look so cute. All right, you'll get breakfast, so you're ready for the day. All right, have fun, girl.
I know.
I always love the first day of school. It's just a new start, and I love new beginnings because you never know what that beginning holds. And each year, we'd look to make things better and better here at Manatee High, so couldn't be happier at watching the sunrise over our buildings and welcoming our students here to Manatee High School.
(singing) This week I delight, it's a delight.
First day of school is exciting every year. You know, the look of excitement in every child's face when they come in, the teachers are very happy and excited to be here.
They are fully autonomous and they do everything pretty much on their own right now.
It's been a great vibe, very positive attitude. Everyone's really excited about the year. Parents, you know, have been very excited about their children coming here, and we're going to feed off of that and hope for a great, successful year this year.
Say hi, everybody.
Hi, guys!
The feel of like how we all came together to making sure that all the students were where they need to be, just the parents, just seemed very welcoming. It was very exciting to see everybody so excited to come back to school. I think that we have a great group of people here that want to be here that are excited to be with our students, and we're so happy to have them back. We miss them.
I want to thank the professionals at MSTV for putting that video together, and thank you all for your leadership, and it's just good to be off and running this year. So, we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting, so, thanks.
Thank you.
And was that recognition as well, Mr. Barber? Yes, that's it. Perfect. Thank you very much. Brings us to our first block for public comments, and we have about five signed up. And just a reminder, just so the public commenters know, we, board policy, we don't engage the public commenters, just so if you're wondering why we never talk back to you, it's just part of our policy. And typically in our board responses, as each board member will sometimes address public comment, so just wanted to make sure that was, we were aware of that. First public comment, Dr. Susan Agruzzo, and followed by Alexandra Smith.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you again. I'm Dr. Agruzzo. The League of Women Voters of Manatee County developed a position paper detailing library media materials recommendations. That paper was emailed to each of you, I believe, earlier today, so you may not have seen it yet. And along with it came a declaration, which Ms. Smith and I are now going to present to you. I'll do the first half, she'll do the second. Whereas, the school district of Manatee County has a large and diverse student population, which includes members of various racial, sexual, cultural, linguistic, religious, and nonreligious, political, socio-economic, mental health, physical health, and learning ability statuses. Whereas, the school district of Manatee County's mission is to educate and develop all students today for their success tomorrow, and its vision is to be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. Whereas, it is understood that any school or classroom library should include a wide variety of age-appropriate and level-appropriate materials that are of interest and importance to the student populations it serves. Whereas, media collection should represent a diversity of authors, interests, life experiences, and topics, so that all students are represented in the literature offered in the media center and classroom libraries. Whereas, the state and district standardized test scores show that the majority of students in this district are not currently at or above level, grade-level reading levels, and therefore a variety of efforts are urgently required to improve this metric. And whereas, many school district of Manatee County students are taking college-level classes through dual enrollment and advanced placement and other opportunities, and are able to work jobs, sign up for the military, emancipate from their parents, marry, vote, and are capable of reading and intelligently discussing mature and/or politically and socially controversial topics.
Hey, y'all. My name is Alexandra Smith, and my son attends Tillman Elementary. I will be completing the League's Declaration regarding school media center and classroom library materials. We therefore ask the school district of Manatee County to develop policy that does as follows: encourages media specialists and educators to select an engaging and diversified selection of media materials that reflects the interests of their student body; supports and protects educators who choose to participate in publicly celebrated reading initiatives that encourage and promote the joy of reading in our youth; commits to providing library materials that reflect true and diverse life experiences from a range of authors and perspectives; protects parents' rights to allow their child to access any material deemed appropriate by a professional-certified educator or media specialist; protects parents' rights to restrict their own child's access to educational material by providing an opt-out procedure through Focus Parent Portal; provides a clear procedure to challenge and to challenge the challenge of media materials; and ensures designated media review committees will be diverse and include media specialists, educators, administrators, current or recently graduated students, parents, and community members; and provides audio recordings of committee meetings on the school or district website, as well as detailed written outcomes of the challenges and tracking of challenger categories. For anyone who's interested, they can find this statement and an expanded report on these recommendations on the League of Women Voters of Manatee County's website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Clarence John Pitts and Carrie Glenn. So Clarence Pitts, Clarence Pitts, no Clarence, so we'll move on to Carrie Glenn, followed by Richard Pelton.
Hi, my name is Carrie Glenn. Address, do you need that?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just want to say, preface this with my husband and I are very much in support of high schoolers being covered when they're at school. However, the dress code has caused a lot of anxiety for our daughter who's new to the district. Every day, it's, what am I going to wear? We've been to the mall several times, and, you know, it's just, talked to a lot of other moms, and it's creating a lot of anxiety for the girls, and when I drop her off, I'm just seeing all these girls in the sweatpants and sweatshirts, and, you know, they, my daughter said, you know, we're so worried every day about how our skin looks and how our hair looks, and we just want to look, you know, we don't want to just be masked in sweatpants and, you know, and sweatshirts. And I'm just wondering if we can, you know, you know, and then, you know, some people have reported the embarrassment to the children that have been called out, dress-coded. And anyway, I'm just asking that the, you know, the district try to work with the parents and students to come up with something that isn't creating so much stress and anxiety, particularly for the girls. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe, Mr. Pelton, hold on one second, I believe, he's trying to get on, Andrew's trying to get on, that's what we hear beeping. So, just come on up, Mr. Pelton, you're good, but you're good, come on up. Yeah, yeah. Richard Pelton? Yeah, come on up. Oh, we don't know where that other volume?
I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. Superintendent Weisong, nice to see you. Since we've got like a lot of time left over, I thought I'd take 20 minutes instead of three minutes. Sorry. I've got three things to discuss, and what Carrie said was just stellar, by the way, it was wonderful. And I want to thank the board for a couple of you responding to my emails, and I appreciate that. Mary, your comments were great. Cindy, thank you very much, and Richard for your comments. This thing with ESS, I'm okay with it, I'm taking care of it. One of the challenges that I have is that I love the school board. I've been with you guys for a long time. You know my story, my background. I've even made application for some things which I'm looking into, but what has happened here is really kind of tragic, but I want to cover three pages here on the correspondence that I sent to the, to the board, okay? I understand you contracted ESS. Whoever the liaison to ESS, I need to have a conversation with them, because if they're getting rid of the first string, top, well-educated, documented, okay, multiple school certificates, teaching certificates, and hanging on to the 25-year-olds that have no teaching experience, we got a problem, Houston. Because one of the things in the allegations, you have all read this, is off the chart. My legal counsel said, what you've got here is way beyond the, the school or educational of the at-will employment. But just to cover a couple of them really quick, and I will try to keep this very positive, because Manatee County, as you well know, you guys are off the chart, one of the best Manatee counties I've ever seen. And I think Manatee, out of the 13,000 school districts in America, and the 800 that ESS represents, you guys are in the top five, no doubt, absolutely. But one of the things is I was concerned with, that they're accusing, accusations, whatever, of performance of professionalism, which doesn't even make sense to me, and I responded with, now this statement that was just written by Ms. Watkins is one of the most insulting, my intelligence namesake, based on unfounded hearsay statements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on my performance. Okay, and if that is what's happening in the school districts across the nation, what Carrie just said, you're going to have guest visiting teachers in front of the room with no education, no talents, no skills, when it comes to classroom management. And what she said, I see it every day, and I have for 10 years, as you well read, 1,500 classrooms, over 50,000 students, and I run them through them all over the place. As I mentioned to Richard, I drive Uber part-time, and you'd be surprised how many students I run into. They're everywhere, and they graduated two, three, four, or five years ago. The second thing in closing, I just want to say, oh, I don't suppose I could ask for like one minute, could I?
Fortunately.
Can't ask for like just maybe 30 seconds?
If you can email, if you can email us that.
I will, and you know, in closing, just, you guys are the best, and you know that. I just would like to address the thing, it has nothing to do with Manatee County Board, school district, because you guys are A-plus the best. I have to get to the, to the bottom this.
Thank you.
Superintendent Weisong, thank you for your time.
Well, if you're going to do all a bunch of compliments, you can have all the time you want.
Bring him back.
Thank you very much.
I waited for like 30 minutes, so I thought, well, we only used 15 minutes, so I've got 15 minutes for my closing.
Appreciate your, all you do, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us up to item, that was, let me go back real quick, see if Clarence Pitts made it in. Clarence Pitts, no? Okay. All right, moving on to item number 11, reports and presentations, 2023 legislative session update. Mr. Chapman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, do we have, do we have the legislative slides? The, Andrew Collel, are you with us?
I am.
Okay, so Kevin Chapman, Executive Director of Administration, and joining us is Andrew Collel, one of our, one of our two lobbyists in Tallahassee of the Sunrise Consulting Group. And before I start with the update, I wanted to make sure that we, how grateful we are to Andrew and Sean Foster, who delivered again during this legislative session, along with our delegation, our state delegation, on a $2 million appropriations request that the governor signed, and we're working on receiving it. And that $2 million appropriation request is for the Guy Harvey Academy of Arts and Science at Anna Maria Elementary. So, again, our delegation, it's not, just not that one, it's, okay. Just want to thank Andrew and Sean for their hard work in delivering that $2 million. Um, uh, just wanna thank Andrew and Sean for their hard work, uh, in delivering that two million dollars. Uh, there was another Guy Harvey appropriation, uh, from Bay County that, uh, happened to get vetoed. So, uh, we survived the governor's veto and we just wanna thank our, our key lobbyists for, uh, for delivering that, um, uh, that to us. So, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you guys for being so good to work with.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, we gotta-
We have it in front of us.
You have it in front of you? Okay.
We have it personally.
Okay, good. So, the first page, uh, is about, um-
Agenda. If you go on the agenda, it's attached into the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there's, there was three pieces of legislation that all affected, uh, technology, uh, and information technology in school districts. So, instead of me butchering that, uh, I thought the expert, Scott Hanson, our Chief Technology Officer, uh, could come to the podium and kind of just give you a little overview about, uh, those three key pieces of legislation and how, how it relates to technology in our schools. So, uh, Mr. Hanson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, Deputies, and Community Members. Thank you. As, uh, Mr. Chapman stated, three specific bills that had a pretty s- large impact on technology uh, as it relates to how we were doing business. Three seventy-nine, known as the, uh, the TikTok bill. Um, two things there, uh, no TikTok on district-owned devices, uh, not, that one is not very challenging, uh, to eliminate. And we obviously do some things with both ISPs, uh, we do some things with policies within our network. Uh, but the, the real challenge came through the second part of that sentence in three seventy-nine and through internet service provided by the district. And that's kinda where the guest network comes into play. I know there's been some questions about that and we really needed to kinda redesign our guest network, uh, regardless of this bill, as we kinda look forward and moving forward. And some of the things and the work, uh, that the board has supported from a cybersecurity posturing with, with silent and, and the work that Serge has done with our team, uh, we really did need to kinda redesign that. The challenge with, with and through internet service provided by the district is when students were connecting to the guest network, oftentimes they will use what's referred to as a VPN. And when they use that VPN and they load that software on their personal devices, we are not able to see that's an encrypted connection. And oftentimes that's getting through, uh, and, and going kinda outbound. And, and that's where the concern was from our position. Um, we have a, a number of school districts, um, that are kinda on the same page, setting up. Districts are a little all over the place right now on this one, um, just to be upfront with you. But I do believe we're postured moving forward. And one of the things that is a benefit of, of this board supporting the ongoing enhancement of technology in the classroom is we're fortunate enough to have the number of devices in the schools to provide to students. And, um, so that one's a little challenging, uh, as it relates to, to, to the guest network with students bringing their own devices and connecting. So, I do believe we're postured moving forward. We obviously make exceptions, medical exceptions, and we have close to a hundred of those already, uh, with students that might be monitored, type-one diabetic students that might have devices. Those have all been, uh, taken care of and we've actually registered more devices or registered more students than they've actually brought devices. And we've been working with Barbara Heffner and her team on that. And then from a staff perspective, safety is always gonna be on the concern of a staff member. Um, we've, we obviously have a staff guest network and they can connect to, uh, we have over fifteen hundred or so plus staff members that can connect, uh, from a safety perspective. Um, and that was one of the concerns that staff and principals brought up. So, we've addressed that as well. That's really the, the big item on three seventy-nine. Uh, Senate Bill two fifty-eight is more of a IT. I, I really don't see any showstoppers in two fifty-eight. Many of the things that we have been doing, uh, over the last four or five years here in Manatee County with the work, um, there's nothing that sticks out in two fifty-eight that draws, you know, again, m- many of the things that were put in two fifty-eight are, are good, uh, good requirements for school districts and, and other government entities to have. Uh, but I don't, I don't know that it's anything for a discussion tonight, any concerns. And really, there's no impact from, from my standpoint on what we're doing here and what we've already been doing. Six-six-two is, uh, is very similar to, um, to library books. If you look, uh, now, if you go out to our district website, um, we had to develop a process back, going back to December of twenty-two. Jacob Olivia sent out an education amendment that kinda outlined some expectations moving forward on the approval of curriculum applications that were student, that impacted students, where students logged in. It had to do with targeted advertising. That also is mentioned, I think, in three seventy-nine. But more importantly, about us sending data to third parties and our third parties, students are logging in and, and obtaining student data. And then what are they doing with that data? So, we've come up with, working with procurement, curriculum, we've come up with a very good process. And the end result of that is if you go out to our district website, whether you click on the IT page under Departments or the Curriculum page, you'll see an Educational Online Services. And we've posted basically all the vetting applications that we've gone through, where we have a student data privacy agreement. And one of the things in that educational amendment outlined the contact, the privacy, the terms, and whether or not, um, you have an, an actual process where you're vetting that application. So, what we've done is moving forward, when an application, curriculum application that impacts students, where a student is logging in, before it comes to the board for approval, it's going through a complete vetting process through curriculum, through IT, through procurement. And then we approve that and we make sure we have a data sharing agreement with that, with that provider. Uh, and then it obviously is coming to you for ultimate approval. So, I believe that we're posture moving forward. That was a heavy lift. We still have more work to do. Uh, but again, working with the curriculum department, then prioritizing the curriculum applications, uh, that we need to approve, uh, that make the most positive impact in our schools, we're going through that. And then on, in addition to that, the work that we've been doing from a cybersecurity perspective, and I know, I'm, Miss Foreman, you've been part of these discussions previously. We're also looking at what we call a vendor risk assessment and we're going through that. So, in addition to meeting the requirements of six-six-two, we're also making sure we do a vendor risk assessment. And that's some of the work that, uh, that we've been doing with, uh, the board-provided resource that, that you've provided to us for cybersecurity. So, certainly appreciate the support. Those are the three main elements or the three main, but again, two fifty-eight, I don't see any, any real showstoppers in two fifty-eight. Uh, it's, we've kinda been doing business as usual and those are things that we've been postured with. Again, there's always work to do. It's changing every day. Uh, but at the end of the day, I don't see two fifty-eight being anything of, of real concern. Any questions?
I have my hand raised?
Oh, yep, go ahead.
Hello. I had, I had some feedback from a parent. And based on what I heard you say too, is that students are no longer to access the, no longer able to access Wi-Fi in our schools. Is that-
Unless there's a, um, an exemption. I mean, obviously, and, and the first thing that we did was, on day one, was we prioritized medical exemptions.
So, but students that just wanna do research or something like that or-
Sure, and guest Wi-Fi. So, if, if there's, and, and we've made medical exemptions, we've also had a device, uh, for a student, a Braille device. We obviously made exceptions for that as well. Um, but yeah, just to arbitrarily connect to the guest network, um, at this time, uh, we have not, we're not providing that access.
Oh, that, we have in the past though, right?
We have. We have, absolutely.
And we had to do that because, wh- why did we have to do that?
We did that previously. When you go back, you know, five, ten years ago, the district didn't provide. We didn't have enough devices in the classroom.
Right.
And, and many districts, you go back to probably two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven, many school districts were doing BYOD at that time and, and obviously for the last ten or fifteen years. Even for our district, if you go back to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we didn't have enough devices in the classroom. But we've, we've expanded that. Um, COVID assisted in that process as we purchased a significant number of devices. Uh, but we've added over twenty-five thousand new devices in the last three years. Um, so, you know, now, now you have to balance the, the bandwidth of that access point in the classroom with prioritization. Instructional devices, uh, or, or guest devices. And many times, um, you'll have, if a student has a personal device, a smartphone, they connect to that. If they've been issued a device, now that's two devices. Every student has two devices and one issued to them by the school and the personal device connected to them. So, then all of a sudden, you're having to prioritize that network traffic as well. And there's some challenges there when you got a school like Lakewood Ranch that has, you know, twenty-five hundred issued devices just on the student side for, for instructional purposes. So, there's some challenges there, um, for, for all school districts.
They, they can, students can connect with their Chromebooks or-
They can. Or, and when we have Windows devices too. I mean, predominantly the student device that we leverage in our schools, the Chromebook answers about eighty, eighty percent of our curriculum initiatives that we have, uh, but yes.
So, so they just can't connect with their personal?
Their personal. But they can, they can still utilize, you know, again, I mean, you go out through our campuses, there's certainly some spots on, on campus that doesn't have good cellular, but we are not stopping any cellular connectivity. So, if they have a data plan, um, they can certainly connect with that cellular plan.
And students take their Chromebooks home with them or, or not?
That's principal discretion. So, there's, there's opportunities for the principal. I mean, traditionally, if, if you look at, um, a, a one-to-one district, you know, there's some things that we've, we've talked about at the leadership level before. We've not gone to say, okay, we're gonna release forty thousand devices. I know there are some schools, um, Hale comes to mind, um, for the last couple of years, I believe. I think Hale, when the students come in, they get a device in their homeroom, I believe, and it kinda follows and then they check it back out. Some of our schools have come up with some creative ways, but as far as our forty thousand, or do we have a, an entire school taking a device home? That answer, I think, is no. Palmview does some things a little differently. They've got a, a number of students that do have an assigned device. But as a district as a whole, you know, we're not, we're not having our students take devices home.
So, students had access in the past, for the last couple of years, with their personal devices to the internet? And then we made a decision that said, we don't want them to do that anymore because of-
House Bill three seventy-nine.
Which said-
The interpretation of House Bill three seventy-nine, not so much that we couldn't do it, it's, I'm not sure how we can ultimately come up and say that we're in compliance if a student has a VPN. I, I can't control what they download on their personal device. So, if, if at the end of the day, student has a VPN on their phone, that's a risk. If that's a risk that we wanna take as a school board, we can certainly accept that risk. But, but I can't, I can't say that we're gonna be in compliance either.
Yeah, that's something we could, we could maybe talk about it, you know, explore that in a workshop or something. Because it, it just seems odd to me that we're not providing internet access. There are students that wanna, maybe during their lunchtime, they wanna, they, they wanna do some research on their own or do some homework. And in instant, it, we're, that's going backwards, not providing internet access. And the second issue then is, you know, the, some of the parents have said these Chromebooks are, they may be good for, I don't know, Word document processing or something like that, but children that are trying to do video, uh, processing work and stuff like that, the Chromebooks are just not apparently up to-
For tho- for those classes, we, and mostly those are our vocational classes, they have Windows devices. They have Windows devices. So, again, we, we posture the device based on the curriculum. So, in, in many of our curriculum or vocational programs, there are Windows devices for, for those. It's, the Chromebooks are like, again, eighty, eighty-five percent of the curriculum initiatives. Um, we're device agnostic. We have-
Right.
Apple devices, iPads, we have Chromebooks, we have Windows devices, desktop devices. It's based on the curriculum being taught in that program.
So, I'm trying to choose my words, you know, here carefully. It, it comes to this idea of whether we are there to provide customer service to students and parents to allow the, the education process and education experience to be as good as it can be, or if we're trying to be kind of ultimately conservative to see if we're gonna maybe possibly not be in compliance with the law. And to go backwards and remove internet access from these, it's causing all kinds of, all kinds of problems. For instance, uh, you know, if a child has their own personal computer, they do their homework on it. And then they have, what, how do they get it? They have to come and put it on their, they email it to themselves and it comes up on their Chromebook. And they're just used to having, I have a computer, I have a big project that I'm working on it. I, I go home, I work on my project, I bring it into class, I'm working in class on it, I hu- ac- access the internet, I can do my research. All of a sudden, all that's been cut off. For an academic institution to not have Wi-Fi access for the students, uh, I, I, we're just going backwards. It's not, it's not the future. It's not, not having Wi-Fi access for students is just not the future. Now, we can regulate how we, what they can access it for, but it just doesn't seem to be, like, it's mov- in my opinion, it's moving backwards. And I can tell you it's causing problems for students that are having to use Chromebooks, they're not up to some of the tasks that they're doing. And then, I don't, again, if they wanna work on their, they can't take their Chromebook home, apparently. So, now they have to do, I don't know, part of their work at, on the Chromebook, email it to themselves, go home, maybe work on it, come back. Uh, I can just, I'll suggest that we maybe talk about that at a workshop.
Sure, yeah. We, we can accept that risk. I mean, if the boards, if, at the board's direction, if we wanna accept that risk, then, then we accept that risk and we can move forward. It, do we have the capacity to do it? Absolutely, hundred percent.
Okay, well, it's not my decision, it's our decision, but we can't, can't talk about it tonight, but I think I, I'll put it down as a workshop item.
No, I think it's something that, um, I'll, I'll save from firsthand experience. My daughter came home and, um, was like, what's going on? Like, she's got AP class, she's in, in student government, they're trying to look up stuff. She brings her, her own, you know, uh, laptop to the school to be able to do that. And, and I understand, um, I do understand from a, from a, a standpoint of we cannot control, and for those who don't understand the VPN, like, we can provide them access, but it blatantly says in the legislate, in that statute that if, we cannot provide them access to get them onto TikTok, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we, we can't be for sure because they can go on to VPNs and VPN bypasses and there's nothing to stop that. We can't do anything on our end to stop that. But you talk about all about the time assuming the risk and things like that. I personally, uh, believe that, you know, at, at the end of the day, if we don't allow the, the, the TikTok and et cetera from our, our devices that we give to them, if we know that they can't download those onto the Chromebook, et cetera, then we've done our job at that point. Um, and if they've gotta hustle through different VPNs, some crash, some go away, some, you know, if we can somehow combat that, I personally think, I'm not, I know we're not making like an action item to vote, but I agree. I think that it's, it's, it's a risk to take if the district, or excuse me, the DOE or somebody wants to say, are you in compliance with that, that law? Because, um, I do think it was, I get the, the, the intent behind it, behind the law. Um, I do think it's just something we can't, we can't really control. So, you're, they're gonna shut them off completely. Um, and, 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 you know, hindsight is, Google Docs works great. You, you can be on multiple platforms with Google Docs and not worry about it. But I, I, I am for opening up the, the internet a little bit. But that may something, I, I would say it's something we probably need to express to, because that's an operational thing that we can express to Dr. Wyson. And then he can, he can instruct y'all from there.
Absolutely.
Miss, Miss Foreman had her hand up.
Yeah. Um, do we, do we have, um, can the students access the cloud to, uh, to store their documents? Are they given accounts?
Yes.
So, if they work on something at school, they can put it up in the cloud and then go home and work on it?
The primary tool that we've used historically here is our learning management system, which is Schoology.
Okay.
That's, and that's what we used during COVID as well.
All right. Can students ac- access the internet on their personal devices with a hotspot?
With their own hotspot?
With their own hotspot.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, and many times, most of us have a smartphone and we can turn on that option and, and use it as a hotspot as well. So, they have connectivity, they certainly can do that. And we're not jamming signals at the schools and blocking their cellular service.
If we give them a hotspot that would be providing internet access under the state law? I mean, can we?
We, we have, we have, we do have hotspots that we have provided to schools through the project, T-Mobile Project Ten Million Program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that have been available to them. Um, and they, you know, again, principals, oftentimes based on the situation with the student, they have the ability to assign that hotspot and a device, uh, to, to any student on their campus. And we do have principals that have done that.
So, if we have a student coming in with their own Windows laptop, the school can technically give them a Wi-Fi, give them a hotspot?
We would, we would give them a, we could give them an external, again, it'll have content filtering on it. Um, it's gonna act very similar to a, a cellular smartphone. Um, I'm not gonna sit here and guarantee connectivity in all spots in every building. Um, the best connectivity that we'll provide is the wireless access point that we provide in each one of our classrooms.
Okay. This is, if they don't have their own data plan through their phone, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm with, with, uh, Mr. Tatum. This is just crazy. Um, you know, we've-
I, I think the-
We've got to find a way to do this without violating the law.
We can. I mean, from the standpoint, what we would do is we would annotate that in our risk assessment document. Uh, and we would, it's an acceptable risk and the board has been made aware and you've accepted that risk and we'll move forward. And we would, it's an acceptable risk and the board has been made aware and you've accepted that risk and we'll move forward. It's not a problem. That's the board's direction, we can make it happen.
When I travel, I can't have TikTok on my district issued laptop, huh?
Not supposed to.
Ranks right there with Netflix. I can't get Netflix either.
If the board desires to accept that risk, then we can, we can accept that risk.
Uh, Ms. Bray had her hand up.
Thanks.
Yeah, um, this is all derivative of the TikTok. Am I correct? Is this why this bill was actually, I read the bill and you get blurred over what's the language is. Is that the intent to stop the? The cell phone peer-to-peer, peer-to-peer communication? Or is it, you know, I, I kind of, I'm leaning like, okay, we just can't cut off all internet to students. They, and we, through the referendum, we bought a lot of equipment for all of our schools, for our students to access. The internet and do work through Schoolology. And to Ms. Foreman's point, they're able to do it, it's loaded and they're able to access it then at home. But I, I too got feedback that. Maybe it's a student code of conduct policy that we may need to add in. Instead of just shutting off the internet and that way it's more individualized instead of the entire district. I don't know if that's, might be the direction we need to go. Because I understand the risk, that's what I'm, there are risks.
And one of the things I just want to point out, and, and like I said, we can certainly make, we have the capacity and the infrastructure to certainly make it happen. But again, I just want to caution, so we're not back at, back here three months from now. When we have a significant number of devices and, and now we're talking about, well, are we going to bandwidth restrict the guest network? Are we going to give, provide, you know, provide more access to the instructional devices? Are we having issues with devices and bandwidth issues? The capacity of an access point is, there's, there's a certain capacity, number of devices. So then you may be receiving calls on the other side complaining of slowness in the connectivity. So I just want to make sure that we're having that conversation go full circle so we're aware of that. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't make you aware of that, so. But we, we certainly can, you know, if, whether we're going to have parents and students sign and opt in. Or we're going to just open it up and say, connect away. There's, there's two options. Districts are doing a little bit of both. And there's a number of districts that are, that are, are kind of holding the ground, saying right now, we're not going to provide guest access to students because we have enough devices. So there's lots of different variations out there right now, so. We'll, we'll certainly take that direction and move forward and we'll.
Yeah, I think, I think as a board, we just express concerns with Mr. or Dr. Weisong, and then we'll go, kind of go from there. And if we need to put on a, expedite it on a workshop, we can. As long as, you know, I want to make sure parents though know that it's not like we've cut them off, like they've, they've got access. Well, when you, let, let's verify this. And every school's a little bit different, of course, like you said, but is, it, when, when you say access to, to a device. Is every classroom that a kid walks into has a cla- has a book, has a Chromebook for them to use?
We've ordered another two thousand devices, a little over two thousand devices since July one. We're extremely close as those two thousand devices come in. We have over forty-five thousand devices.
Pretty darn close.
Fifty-two or, what was the number that you said earlier? That was charter school population. So we look at our traditional attendance, we have well over, and that's just mobile devices. Again, we have many labs and vocational labs.
What are those mobile devices? Obviously, we used to fight over laptop carts, right? We had to sign them in.
You would be hard pressed to walk into a, a school if a teacher has a, has a cart with twenty, twenty-five or thirty devices. Every school, a little bit different how they hand those out.
Sure, sure. Maybe math doesn't get them as much and, and history does and English gets them, but I mean, if, if. Because there's, there's an argument to say your personal devices are not going to be attached if they're able to have access to a computer in every classroom. To be able to work on, on their projects and Schoology, it gets attached. I mean, just like if I'm working on Google Docs right here and I leave it here, I can get it on this one, I can go home and get on my other one. So, so it stays for them. It's not, it's not as cumbersome as having to email and, and things, or even back in the old day with, um, your, your thumb drives. So. It's not like we've completely cut them off.
And our students also have that, just so we're, just for full transparency, our students have access to Office three sixty-five on those Chromebooks as well. They have access to Word, Excel and PowerPoint.
And this is not something the board chose to do either. This is a state stat, this was.
I would have been just fine if had three seventy not been, not been implemented.
Correct. So, but that's another thing, I want to make sure that, that we were, we're abiding by the statutes that were presented and. There's other folks who, who vote on those that they could probably email.
And we had, we had conversations, I mean, this, this converse, this wasn't, this decision wasn't made in a, you know, an individual room with one person. I've been updating that this was coming since January, February, March, April, all the way up to July one.
Dr. Weisong, I know you want to jump in.
Thank you, Chairman. I, yeah, just to add to that, and what Mr. Hanson just said is important. We've probably, we've probably talked about this weekly at Cabinet in terms of understanding. What's in the new legislation, how it's being interpreted, and then we have a, we have a, an incredible group of experts working in IT. In the school district of Manatee County. And so when our chief technology officer says, I can't assure you that we're in compliance unless we do this. We, I, I don't have, I have a, I have a statutory obligation to not ignore statute. And, and so this may not be the only way to comply, but we need time to continue to figure out. What is the best way to comply? And again, I, I think the key is districts are handling this a lot of different ways. And keep in mind that this is one bill. There are many. I was with a group of principals this morning who were getting almost exclusively departmental legislative updates. Nearly three hours worth of legislative updates that impact school operations. So we just have to remember that every year in the months following session. There's a lot of weight to all of these changes. But, but I think we hear you, we've read the, 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 the parent emails as well. We just may need a little more time to work out. What is the best way to comply and, and kind of balance the competing interests? But I also think the other key point is there's lots of internet access available through all of these devices. Really what's been restricted is personal device use. On a, on a, on a public government network. So I think that's the, that's the key piece, and I'm not saying it'll always be that way. Again, we just need time to work through how all of this is being interpreted. I've, I've asked Mr. Hanson to talk with his colleagues in other districts, and again, some have read it like, like, and have implemented it like we have. Others are taking a different approach and we want to study those approaches. And if we, if we find a district that we think. Has a solution that's compliant, that, that, that covers us there, but that also opens it up a little bit, then we may very well be able to pivot.
And we had, uh, thank you Superintendent Weisong, and we, we, we really need, again, I, I go back to, we really needed to redesign our wireless network. We had one large bucket and there were eighty, at any given time, we had eighty thousand devices registered to that guest network, eighty thousand. So again, if we take on the security and we put our security hat on and our compliance hat on. We need some way to manage eighty thousand devices. So this was an opportunity, as I shared with the team, for us to create some channels, if you will, to break it down in a very simplistic term. And be able to identify devices in a better manner and come up with a better overall process to be postured moving forward. I will leave you with one other item that will, you know, probably be a discussion item and where we took maybe. I still feel we took a, an approach to meet compliance because that's, I think, what we're supposed to do unless we're directed otherwise. Or as Dr. Weisong said, again, there may be another way. We're, I'm hearing that there's going to be some additional guidance come out soon, supposedly. That's going to maybe clear some of this up. But one of the other items that, that, that we're certainly. You know, we've been postured with as it relates to content filtering, if you look through those bills, one of the other bullets states, and this is a heavy lift. Limits access by students to only age-appropriate subject matter and materials on the internet. So now let's talk about our current devices. And I'll share with you what some school districts are doing today. I'll be, be heading off to a conference here in a few weeks where we're, all of the peers in the school district of my position are getting together to kind of discuss this. But many are going to, if it's in the content filters, have categories. And those URLs are postured in education. And some of them are saying, well, if the URL doesn't fall in the category of education, block everything. Because that's how else are you going to restrict it age-appropriate? And then create an individual profile, elementary, middle and high. And apply URLs that are approved by the district only to elementary because age-appropriate. Key word in that statute now is age-appropriate. So I think there's some, some interesting discussions now. I certainly did not want to create. Complete havoc at the start of the school year because we have a number of other projects that we're moving forward and, and the team is doing an outstanding job with. But again, another challenging aspect of some of these statutes. So again, I, I point that out because. You know, that's something that we're going to have to collectively discuss as a district and take a position on so we can kind of move forward. But again, if you read that in the statute, it's, it's a heavy lift. So I just wanted to just mention that, one other item, because I think that's a key piece to this as well.
Mr. Tatum was lit and then Ms. Foreman.
So if there are any legislators listening, please think through, before the beginning of government comes down and your great, great idea, then think about the unintended consequences of what you're about to do or what you've done. I, I just wanted to reiterate the point that I made earlier, and that is that even though they have Chromebooks, just to make sure we understand that, that some of the feedback I'm getting is that they're not up to the task for certain. Certain projects like video processing projects and sure, for Google documents and maybe basic PowerPoints and stuff like that. But again, you know, there, and maybe we could have it on a, on a permission basis, so we're not hooking up five thousand devices and clogging the net, you know? If you would like to hook up your personal device to, you know, the, the guest Wi-Fi at the school, you need a teacher permission, some, some, you have a reason to do it. It's not because you want to watch videos at, at, you know, during your lunch hour. It's, I have a reason to do this and, you know, there's, there's a permission that's given to you or something, something like that. Would seem reasonable, but yeah, we, you know, we, we made the point that it's going backwards to, to take internet access away from people. And some people do have their, maybe they have their own software on their computers that they use for a particular project and it's a specific piece of software and then they don't have it on the Chromebook. So just keep those things in mind as you're, you know, moving forward, so.
I, I'm a product of the public education school system, both my children are, and actually my, although I'm a, a pro Windows person, I have to put that to the side. My, both my kids are Apple. They still believe dad at some point will have an iPhone, that's, it's never going to happen. But my, both my kids were a video production student, so I, I'm certainly, certainly understand that. And, and also have the perspective, since I'm blessed to have an incredible wife who also is a teacher. So I, I do see all sides of it, so, understood.
Do these apply to charter schools?
Yes, hundred percent.
Do they apply to private schools?
That receiving vouchers?
I would, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not answer that one right now. I, I have my assumption, but I, I would imagine if a private school is receiving. Some form of funding through the school district, which in some cases they're a conduit and, and are created, I would imagine at some point they possibly would be. But I, I don't have that, I don't really have that answer on the private schools. We have enough to keep ourselves busy on the, on the public K-12 side, so, yes. But I can certainly find out for you, ma'am.
It just seemed like General Counsel DiAgostino had an idea about the answer to that question. Her face said it did, she did.
I, I haven't fully examined the Senate bill, but looking at it quickly, it appears to apply only to K through twelve public schools, not private.
Which would include charter?
Yes, but not private.
Definitely charter schools. Private I don't try to dive into because it's just not area of expertise, so.
I don't see anybody else lit up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chapman?
Thanks, Mr. Hanson. You can see why I had Mr. Hanson graciously give up his time to brief you all on that. Good leadership decision there. So in the next, I'm going to kind of cruise through these and just stop me as, as we go. A lot of this you've heard already. There was HB ten sixty-nine and HB fifteen twenty-one. Most of this we already do. We've, we've kind of discussed a little bit through, through our code of conduct discussion. But in these bills, the state made very clear that everything really needs to be defined by your biological sex at birth. So that when it comes to bathrooms especially, pronouns, names, nicknames, all that needs to be aligned to your biological sex at birth. And we, of course, do that here in, in the district. Also, when it comes to health, education. The state made a, a determination that materials for that curriculum need, need to be DOE approved. And so we're actually still waiting for the State Board of Education to opine on, on what that actual curriculum will be. So right now it's not being taught, but once, in this school district, but once it, once we get those materials from the State Board of Education approved. State materials on health education, we will then notify parents and, and so forth so that they have a chance to, you know, go through the opt-out process and all that that we have already set up, so.
I had a question.
Uh, yep, go ahead.
Was it my first? Okay.
Yeah, you were first.
So did I, did I hear you say that right now we're, we're not teaching health education?
Well, and that's okay. It's, it's, it's just part of, we're going to get to that in the second half of the year, once we have those approved materials from the state.
So we were teaching it, but then we stopped to make, no, we, we were never teaching?
Yeah, ninth day of school, we're just, we'll, we'll get to it when we get those approved materials from the State Board of Education.
I, I guess what I was, one thing is, we, we usually teach health education, but this semester we stopped doing what we were doing to make sure that we're in compliance with the new law. And then when we get them, we'll start teaching it again.
Exactly, and make sure parents are notified and, and, you know, they need to, they would like to opt out all the processes that we've had in place for, for years.
Is that a separate class or is this just included in some, like gym class? I don't know.
Yeah, that I might need a little help on, but I think it varies, but usually it's in the physical education classes, I think, so.
Okay, I'm just curious, like, how do we, how are we going to start a class? I mean, the semester's already started and now we're two weeks into it.
It's not like a whole block class like that, like it's, it's a portion of a class.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess don't think of it as an everyday.
So it's not causing?
Ninety minutes of instruction every day. It's just a piece that.
Piece of, in biology or phys ed or something like that, okay.
That's right. Think of it as units.
Okay.
Or lessons within specific courses.
So we can just move it back towards the end of the year after we get DOE-approved material. Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bray?
Um, I'm going to go to the pronouns.
Yeah.
And the bathrooms.
Right.
It brought to my attention that a school was allowing students to go into opposite sex bathrooms. I just want to make sure that the, all the schools that's listening or will listen, this is a real cut and dry policy, in my opinion.
It's law, state, state law, so maybe I can find you after the meeting and you can.
Right.
I would take, I don't.
I will. I'm not going to name this, I'm not going to name anything or the school, but.
No, no, I want you to name them to Dr. Weisong immediately when you hear that, to let, to see if there's something going on.
I think I did already, so, but.
I want to make sure that, that it's not pushed aside, like that's something that absolutely, this is, here it is right here on the HB ten sixty-nine, like.
Right.
One hundred percent.
And or the pronouns, you know, and I think I talked to you offline about.
Right. You can't, we know the law now is.
There's no, there's no exception with a parent sending a note to a teacher, call my.
There is a little clarification that's needed from the State Board of Education. So right now, the way the law reads is that a parent can consent and say, my child, I'd like my child to be called. Something other than their, different than their biological sex. The law says that an employee cannot be forced to call somebody by a name that's opposite of their, of their birth. of their, of their birth.
Because that's an awful lot of stress on a teacher.
Sure.
And staff.
Yep.
You know, to have that fear of being sued or whatever, I don't know, but.
Yeah, our schools have all, our schools have all been briefed on this, and so far, ninth day of school, we've been doing all right.
Okay, okay. And I, to Mr. Tatum's point, that's what we do. We do different parts of the curriculum through different parts of the year as well. So, okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And then HB 551, again, this is, this is one of those that we're waiting for, well, the instruction, we're waiting for the instruction, and this law will actually be in effect in the 2024, 2025 school year. So this new African-American instruction curriculum will go into effect 2024, 2025 as it comes down from the state. So that's what that has in that bill. This is a lot of bullets.
Some of this, like, we've been through.
Right. Right, this is just, yeah, we pretty much know this, and so you can, maybe I'll just take questions if you have questions, but essentially, if you go to our website, just like how Scott, Mr. Hanson said, you know, we now have all the, you know, any online or technology curriculum application is now online. You can see where it is and what it is and how it's been vetted. Same thing when it comes to books now, right? So when you go to our website, you click curriculum, you go into the library section, you can look at what, what books are in your child's classroom by school, and also what books are in your child's school in their media center. So our team has done an incredible job this summer to organize that, and we, and the work continues every day as, you know, as we keep making sure that this process is exact.
Is Andrew still online?
I think so. Andrew, are you through the drive-through at Wendy's? Thank you, Andrew.
Andrew, thanks for joining us. I just, I know, and we've got a, we've got a legislative workshop that I know you'll be down here for Friday, so I don't, I don't want to.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to get too far off, but I do have a question, just kind of general. Out of all these that we've, that we've seen and kind of looked at, are you, with this session obviously being a little bit sooner this next year, are you hearing of, you know, possible, I don't know, I don't know how you want to rephrase it, revisions, or, you know, they call them like glitch bills, where, hey, this seems like a really great idea in concept, but it really doesn't work. We've got to go back and look at this again and tweak things. Do you see that in some of these bills in session coming up? And I'm, I'm more asking on the bigger stuff. SB 1, you know, some of the stuff that really does affect us, I'm not, you know, asking about some of these media center, but some of the bigger ones that have passed, do you see there, do you hear any rumblings from delegations that there may be some reviewing of some of these things?
So I have not heard anything in particular, other than one item that I will mention more on Friday, that I'm going to follow up on before Friday to see if it's, you know, everything in this process is almost hearsay to a level until it falls out. But I'll say this, we are on the short summer. Everything takes effect July 1, and the end of September they're back. So I don't think there is realistically enough time for school boards to implement things. Let's take school start times for an example, even though there's several years before that's fully implemented, there's obviously huge issues with implementing that, that I think would require a fix, or, and this is just me talking, and my, you know, a fix or repealing the thing or changing the thing. I just don't think there's enough time in that, you know, 90-day, 120-day window for there to be results from implementing these types of things. Additionally, and I'll use school start times again as an example, the leadership of the legislature who's asked for these things, they're still in leadership, right? So it's something they wanted, it's something they pushed forward, and so it's a double-sided coin. It may not be the time, the immediate session afterwards, to try to change something. And also, on the other side of that coin, it might be best for the person who put something in play to try to change something. So I know I essentially gave you nothing as an answer, but I am trying to explain to you really why I have very little of an answer for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
I have my hand written.
Yep, I did not see. Yep, go ahead.
Just real quick on, when it was up there, it was gone now. It's gone. But it talked about the instruction of certain, next slide, please.
This, the.
The next slide. With all the, with all the work, no, that was.
Media centers?
Yeah. Down at the bottom, what was the final determination on that? I saw media reports. Suppose I should read the legislation myself, but I thought it said something like K through 12, you can't teach. It was K through 12, and then, but it went back and forth, and it finally settled on this language? Is that what the final settling of the?
It's the uniqueness of the process.
Okay.
The legislation had, remember it was K through 3 last year, they extended, the legislation extended it to K through 8.
Right.
Then the State Board of Education did their rulemaking and said K through 12, and that's where that last paragraph, that it must be age appropriate, developmentally appropriate, so on and so forth. But essentially, K through 12.
It's prohibited in K through 12 unless, unless you do it in grades nine through 12, and then it has to be.
Right.
In accordance with whatever this.
Right, right.
So the law is K through 8, and the DOE rule is K through 12?
Right, which essentially, and my council friends can weigh in, but essentially, think of it as, it is now law. So there's, it's in statute now, they can correct me, once the State Board of Education, I guess it's an administrative rule, and then there's probably statute. So maybe, maybe Ms. Pamela can weigh in for me.
Well, usually it's the other way around.
Right.
Statute, and then the rule comes out afterwards.
So the statute is K through 8, and then the rule now is, that we, that we have to live by, is K through 12 from the State Board of Education.
How does the, how does the rulemaking body then expand the law, so to speak? I mean, whether it's a good idea to do it K through, I would, I'm more in favor of expanding it as far as possible. I don't think a lot of this stuff belongs in our K through 12 school system. However, how does the, how does a rulemaking agency, a bureaucracy, expand itself beyond what the law says? How do they just go, oh, we'll make it K? It appears, when I hear it, that they just said, well, we'll make it K through 12. What legal process or what legal theory or idea do they use to say, we want to make it K through 12, even though the statute says K through 8?
The short answer is they can't.
Okay.
The rule can only implement the statute.
So you would say they've gone beyond their legislative authority and?
I can't clearly say that.
Okay.
But that's, in a vacuum, that's the way it is.
Sure. Okay. I'm just trying to understand how the process works, and I thought I kind of understood how laws worked, and the bureaucracy was supposed to implement the law and not go beyond the law, but.
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
So HB 543 expands our, that whole threat assessment process. It's actually creating a new process, a new model. It's called the Florida Model. As you know, you all approved a position early in July, a district threat assessment coordinator, and they're the one who's going to now implement this new model. It involves taking the school-based threat assessment teams. There'll be chairs now and vice chairs, and the principals outside that process been involved in another way, organizing all that, training everybody by December. So it's, we'll probably have a workshop or something on it eventually, once we get, you know, we're in the process right now, but once it all gets set up, but it's, it lays out this new model of threat assessment in 543. In the next two bills, Andrew mentioned start times. It's a discussion we'll all have one day here soon to figure out how we do this, but by July 1, 2026, we've got to have new start times for elementary, middle, and high. And so we'll figure that one out. And then also, as you all know, the bill that is putting some new qualifications for public unions, and so, so there's some dates there that they have to hit and certain thresholds and things that's laid out in that legislation.
Yeah.
What are, what are the dates, the drop dead dates for this?
Yeah, it's, it's, you have to have a law degree to kind of figure it out, but it's, it's, it depends on when you've recertified and when your recertification is.
Okay, how about our unions? What is their date?
I don't know that. I'd have to come back to you on that.
If you give me one second, I could, I could pull it up for you. I know, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
I know by October 1, if you, if you haven't recertified by October 1 of this year, you have 30 days thereafter to go through the process if you haven't recertified already. So if you've been through the recertification, Andrew can weigh in, but.
Okay, and I appreciate, and give me one second, because I can actually, it's almost as better if I'm remote, because I can pull it up on my computer here.
Got to have you around all the time, Andrew.
Yeah, okay, see here, recertification. Let me look for that re, Kevin, keep going on, okay, while I pull this up.
Okay.
I'll go.
Maybe I'll come to the next slide, Ms. Forman, and we'll come right back to it. Okay.
Yep, and I'll have that answer for you in just a second.
Okay. We all know HB 1, you know, we're living in it, and obviously, it's, you know, it is what it is. Also, there is a provision of it, that there was a requirement, you'll see it in the second bullet there, the bill also eliminates the requirement that students must complete at least one credit through a virtual course to graduate. So they eliminated that requirement in that, so that's where that was. 1537, we have to teach, I, what's missing there is the victims of communism bullet point. So there has to be 45 minutes of instruction on September 11th about September 11th and the first responders and all that who, who were heroes that day. Also, some required instruction now on Asian-American and Pacific Islander history, specifically the internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II. And then 45 minutes of instruction on November 7, which is now Victims of Communism Day, and kind of the education around the negatives and repercussions of communism. And also there is concordant scores. I should have probably explained that a little bit more. That's related to classical literacy test that now students could potentially take to qualify for graduation. Do I have that right? And so, and so we're working through, we're waiting for some more, again, State Board of Education requirements on that classical literacy test that would be there. So we're going to wait for more direction on that. And then the last piece of legislation there is, again, a very simple sentence, but it's a little more complex than that, but expanding drop, so employees can extend their drop retirement.
So let me, when you were talking about, were you, Ms. Forman, were you talking about the recertification of the entities? Is that what you were asking about?
Yes, at what point are, what's the cutoff date on the 60%?
On the, oh, on the 60, okay. I have a thing here about October 1. Sorry about that. Hold on, let me find.
Yeah, it, that's why I mean, we'd have to come back to you with a more legal answer to that, because it's, it's when you've recertified. So if you've already recertified in this calendar year, I believe you don't have to, this bill won't affect you until you have to recertify next year, and you have to do it within 30 days of that date. So if I recertified in April, let's say, and I'm kind of generalizing here, if I recertified in April this year, I would then, you know, then I'm due, what, March 1 of next year? Here's Mr. Here comes the expert.
Here comes the answer.
March 1. He'd have to recertify, so he may have more specifics.
Mr. Bailey gave me the answer. So for Ask Me, 30 days prior to July 7 of 2024. For MEA, 30 days prior to December 22, 2024.
So next year.
30 days prior.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, our chief of HR and.
Yeah, I had another question. I just want to write this down. So that was Ask Me, okay. The Heroes Day and Asian-American, and is the state providing us with curriculum and materials?
I believe so, I believe so, yes.
So we're not having to invent the wheel?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy with that.
All right. Thank you for that update. Andrew, thanks for being on. I don't see anyone else that up to speak or ask questions, so we really appreciate it. I know we're going to bend your ear and use you, Andrew, I know we'll use you Friday. Look forward to seeing you.
I'll be here in person, and then obviously, thanks again to Scott Hanson, our Chief Technology Officer, for helping me with that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Andrew.
Moves us to item number 12 on the agenda, consent items. Superintendent Weisong?
Yes, the, yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for August 22, 2023.
So moved.
You have a motion?
I will second.
Here we go.
And a second? Did it register?
I don't have the ability to say yes or no yet.
Yeah.
He needs to hit the second button.
I don't, yeah, is.
Did you hit your second?
I did.
There you go.
All right, let's go ahead and vote for the consent item to approve the consent items on the agenda, passes 5 to 0. Moving on to new business, item number 14, Superintendent Weisong?
Yes, I recommend approval of the revision of the job description of coordinator for recruitment.
So moved.
You got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second? And Dr. Weisong, if you just want to explain, you know, briefly for the public what that job description is?
Yes, this is an existing job description for an employee to focus their time on recruitment of future personnel, and so this is a revision of that job description, which, if approved by the board, then will be posted, and we'll go looking for the right candidate to coordinate recruitment efforts.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I do have a speaker lit up, Ms. Bray.
And is budgeted already? Yes.
Yes, it is budgeted.
And no other speakers are lit, so we have any, no further discussions. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval, as I got rid of my granite case, on the approval of the revision of the job description of coordinator in recruitment, and that passes 5 to 0. Item 14.2, Superintendent Weisong?
Yes, I recommend approval of the reclassification of the job description and position of specialist for vocational rehabilitation employment.
So moved.
Motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. And can you explain this one for the public, Dr. Weisong?
Yes, this is a, this is a job description that is grant-funded, so there's no, there's no general fund impact, and this position has been in place without a revision since 2007, but the work of the position has changed substantially. So the job description brings current, the actual responsibilities, and then there's an adjustment on the salary schedule based on a market analysis of individuals who do this work in other districts.
Perfect. I don't have any speakers lit up to speak. I know for us, we know about this through our board briefing, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the reclassification of the job description and position of specialist vocational rehabilitation and employment, and that passes 5 to 0. Item in new business, 14.3, Superintendent Weisong?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the discontinuation of the existing School District of Manatee County Sales Tax Block Grant to qualified charter schools due to changes in state law, specifically Section 1011.72, Pren 2, and Section 212.055, Pren 6, Pren C, effective July 1, 2023, with the implementation of HB 1259.
Thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second? Did you have a comment, Ms. Messenger?
I just had a request.
Yep.
Um, can we have just the monetary changes that are gonna take place? For instance, how much more we, they're going to receive over those five years? I know that was something you had shown me at my board briefing, but I just think it'd be beneficial for it to be stated that, yes, there, this is the change, and how much more they're gonna get over that time period?
Yes, so, um, so with the change of, with this new law, um, and it's on a, um, a five-year glide, uh, as far as the charter schools receiving a proportionate, uh, share of that, uh, one point five millage. So in, uh, over the course of, all the way through, um, fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-seven to twenty-eight, uh, they will be getting, um, ten, by, uh, sorry, we'll go ahead and start with the first year, this coming up year, they'll be receiving two million, the next year, three point six million, and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, six point six million, uh, we're estimating by the time it's twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, eight point six million in, uh, twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, ten point eight million, and by twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirteen point nine million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being divided among all the charter schools.
Was that?
Being that.
Oh, yes, uh, amongst the eligible, eligible charter schools, yes.
Awesome, thank you, and I know we, we've, um, had a workshop on this, so we've, we've discussed this as a board, I don't see any other, thank you, I don't see any other, uh, board members lit to speak, so we have a motion, and we have a second on item number fourteen point three. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the discontinuation of the existing Sales Tax Block Grant, uh, to qualified charter schools, um, with the implementation of HB twelve fifty-nine. Passes, that passes five to zero. And moving to, uh, item number fifteen, new business. Um, item number one is approval of travel expense for school board members to attend the twenty twenty-three Manatee Chamber of Commerce Planning Retreat, not to exceed five thousand. Do I have a motion? You have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, and I know just for anybody out there that doesn't know, um, we have a chance to go as board members to attend with the Manatee Chamber of Commerce with multiple businesses, et cetera, um, a chance to go down and, and have a retreat and, and have a, a, a planning session with, with those, um, uh, other businesses, and, and the chamber runs it. I know, I think.
I wish.
All four are going?
I can't.
I am not, I cannot go, unfortunately, but I know several others are, so look forward to hearing back once you get back, report back, um, you know, what you learned, and, and which way the, the county is working, and how we can help, so.
Dr. Weisong will be doing a presentation.
Yeah. Fantastic, so look forward to hearing back from you all that attend, um, what your perception was. So, let's go ahead and vote on item number fifteen point one, approval of travel expense for school board members to attend twenty twenty-three Manatee Chamber of Commerce Planning Retreat. That passes five to zero. Item number fifteen point two, approval of travel expense for school board member to attend the Florida School Board Association FSBA twenty twenty-three Policy Governance and Bargaining One-O-One Forum, not to exceed twelve, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second, and of course, these are, these FSBA, um, chance for us to, as board members, go in and uh, educate ourselves, and obviously, this one is about policy governance and bargaining, one-on-one. So, um, I believe Mr. Tatum is going on both of those, I think I'm gonna try to get to the policy governance, but um, I can't make that bargaining one-on-one, so, should be good, I think everything FSBA provides us, um, does a great job, and, and I want to hear more, obviously, Friday, you know, your report on, on your, what your trip was, but I really think that, um, it's great that, that we have some of us board members, at least one or two, going to some of these to represent us as a board, so.
I did attend this year or two ago, and, uh, and it's good, it's good.
Great.
Not great, but it's good.
Ms. Messenger, you were let up?
Yeah, I went to it as well, um, since you've expressed an interest to revise our motion to express that he would also like to attend and perhaps up, up the funds.
You do not have mine in there? Okay.
Because the only person that was on here is Mr. Tatum, but perhaps we can just say two thousand or.
Or you guys could share a room.
I'm not staying, I'm driving up and driving back.
He's just driving up and driving back.
I don't know what the registration fee was?
But it's not to ex- it's not to exceed, so if we set a number a little higher.
I would say fifteen hundred, I would say fifteen hundred.
To make it, so that he could also go, I just want to make sure that that's, he can go.
I, I, I don't know, twelve fifty, I may be able to, because I'm only doing the registration fee, and I want to say it was a hundred and fifty dollars, so I'm not, there's no hotel fee?
About mileage.
Oh, very true, let's just go ahead.
And, and I also think that the, it should reflect that it's, it's both.
Correct.
You know.
So you want to go ahead and make a amendment to that?
Amendment to the motion?
Would you like me?
We haven't voted on it, yeah.
Sure, um, I make a motion to amend, to reflect that the not to exceed amount will be fifteen hundred dollars and to include Chair Choat.
Be more than that.
Well, I always said two thousand, but.
Two thousand.
But he said fifteen hundred, okay. I will amend, I, I make a motion to amend, um, that the not to exceed amount is two thousand dollars and includes Chair Chad Choat.
I'll second the amendment.
Alright, so you don't have to put that on the screen, we'll just go ahead and vote manually on that, so I'll, any discussion on the amendment?
I think it's worthwhile, and I think.
Let's go, yeah, so let's go ahead and vote on the, um, amendment given by Ms. Messenger, just all raise your hand and signal aye.
Aye.
So that is amended, so now we can actually vote on item five point two, as it now will read not to exceed two thousand dollars, and adding myself on there. And so, we'll need to vote again on that item, do you want to clear us? Or you want us to just do it manually? We can just do it manually. That's fine. All those in favor of five approval of travel expense, fifteen point two on our new business, uh, raise your hand and signal aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so that carries five to zero. Um, it's six thirty, or it's a normal hour and a half break, you guys want to just keep going?
I need a break.
What's that?
Get it done.
You do need to go to the bathroom real quick?
I do.
Okay, let's go five-minute recess, that's fine.
Information.
All right, welcome back after our quick recess. Um, moving on to item number sixteen, some workshop item requests. Um, the new
Not us.
Uh, the new list is, is there and we work so just FYI on some of the dates coming forward for workshop. Obviously you all know we just approved two of us, you know, for the twenty ninth or one of us can be gone the twenty ninth. September twenty ninth, there will be just some communication with Ms. Cox will, will make sure she communicates with us on, um, not the twenty ninth, excuse me. Um, yes, September twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, yeah.
Moving that and we've got a couple of different ideas that will, we'll see what works with along with Dr. Weisong's schedule and staff schedule and things like that. Um, uh, I, we do know that, that, uh, Mr. D'Amico, just talking with him, he has to have that one his done, that, that shade meeting, um, in October. Um, and so that'll be the first one in October when we come back after September. So we're starting to follow these in and put these in, um, uh, through October. So if you look at our calendar, uh, October thirteenth would be our second Friday of the month. Dr. Weisong is, is gone, uh, at the FADS conference. So we won't have, um, the, with a workshop then. So my thought is September twentieth, putting it to September, gosh, I'm in September, pushing it October thirteenth, pushing to October twentieth. So, cause October thirteenth, Dr. Weisong is gone, so that workshop will be the October twentieth. And then we will have one obviously on the twenty seventh as well. So back to back Fridays, um, but we'll have obviously October thirteenth off because of, uh, Dr. Weisong will be gone. So I don't want to hold any, any, uh, workshop without him here. So that's just some, some date changes for October.
So we're having a workshop on the twentieth?
Twentieth of October and the twenty seventh, twenty seventh is a normal one that's always been scheduled. But because we can't do on the thirteenth, we're just gonna push it back to the twentieth. Unless in the next couple, unless next month, you guys feel like, hey, cancel the twentieth one, that's fine too, whatever you guys, we can decide. But I just wanted to make sure you guys do in advance of that, um, for October to, to, to check calendars. The twenty ninth, again, Ms. Cox will email everybody to see, we've got a couple of different options to move that September twenty ninth one. Um, and she'll go over those options and kind of see what, um, what works best with, with everybody's calendar. Um, but we're starting to, to pick off this list. Um, obviously as we go, you've, you've got more stuff for, for Dr. Weisong, let him know. Um, and, uh, we'll continue to move forward with, with lining up these lists and having them get ready to rock and roll. So just be aware of that email when it comes out from Ms. Cox. I don't know if she's already sent it out yet or not. Already sent it out, perfect for September twenty ninth. That's just obviously one that we've got to get. Um, this Friday workshop, we got CRI coming back presenting their reports. We've got our, um, uh, legislative priority updates. We've got our evaluation of superintendent goals. I've got some stuff that I've asked from FSBA, uh, and some other, um, districts that are using goals instead of performance related evaluation. So we'll have a couple of different examples to look at for us to kind of tweak and change, um, and see how we want that to look like. Um, and then also board operations, staffing board, office space is discussed, uh, this Friday as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when it comes to the superintendent evaluation, could you also make sure that we get copies of the last evaluation tool that we were using with Ms. Saunders? That was tweaked to, uh, follow the, um, uh, strategic plan.
Okay, yeah. I just thought it was more performance. But we'll, we'll get it, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely get it. Did you get that, Ms. Cox? Perfect. Um, so here in the next day or so, we'll send out everything that I've kind of compiled and then we'll send that out as well. So we have something to go on for Friday. Perfect. Um, all right, so, uh, the seventeen, oh, and by the way, September, um, the reason why we don't have that first week of, um, workshop in September is because of, uh, you all going to the chamber retreat. So, um, and I think before the chamber, you're gone the two or three days.
I'm gone too.
Yeah, so that's why we moved that and didn't have that workshop at all, uh, for that second week of, of September. Um, moving on to updates, so legal update, um, Mr. Di? Anything from Ms. DiAgostino too as well?
Oh, big news, uh, the law firm added an attorney. Attorney DiAgostino, I'm happy that she's, uh, joined the firm here. Um, it's been kind of lonely up here. I've had, uh, Mr. Tatum who watches a lot of legal dramas on TV, so that's pretty good.
Law and Order every day.
We will both be attending a School Board Attorney Association Conference on Friday, uh, so Patty Petroff has agreed to cover your, uh, workshop. The only other thing I have is, uh, coming up, um, on the Juul litigation. Um, the, uh, as you know, it, it settled, it's in the settling process, um, in a, there's multiple defendants and a group of defendants that we call, uh, Altria, which was a division of Juul. Uh, a separate set of settlement documents have been sent to me that I'll be reviewing and putting on a future, uh, agenda for board approval. It looks almost identical to the ones with Juul. So I don't, I don't anticipate anything controversial there. And there, as, as you're probably aware, you haven't gotten any money yet. Um, that's anticipated, I want to say around, uh, they're saying around October. Um, so, and the, the total, if you recall, was around two hundred and fifty thousand. Some money has come out of that for, uh, paying for attorney's fees and things like that. So, um, I think you're gonna get the money probably in two, two or maybe three installments. So nothing yet, but it's heading in the right direction.
Okay? Thank you.
That's it.
Anything, Ms. DiAgostino?
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Weisong, I'd just say I'm excited to be here, working for the district and looking forward to helping you guys advance your mission and your vision. Um, and thank you to the superintendent and everyone who has been so kind and welcoming to me on these first two days. So, thank you. Two days on the board.
Yeah, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Uh, operations, Mr. Rinaldi.
Good evening, Chair, board members, uh, Dr. Weisong. Um, first of all, I really want to, big thank you, big shout out to instructional staff, school administrators, parents, students, the operational group. This has been an extremely smooth school opening. I mean, we, we have had a couple of hot classrooms here, a couple of hot classrooms there, but no major issues that we weren't able to immediately triage and/or move some staff around while we were ordering equipment and getting parts in and all that. So from an operational standpoint, from a facility standpoint, went very well. Transportation, we had, um, I mean, the nor, the normal issues at this point. We, we knew that we were short on drivers, uh, really, we had eight to nine administrators driving. We had a lot of double backs, we had some triple backs. Um, we had some parents didn't use the, the app to register their kids to ride and will never leave a student at the bus stop. So we all, we pick everybody up. Right now, we're starting to go through the, a little bit of a reorganization of our routes, identifying those routes that, um, are under capacity, those that are over capacity. And we're getting ready to do some balancing over the next couple of weeks. Uh, but once again, thank you, parent, thanks for the patience and, uh, we're, we're moving forward. Um, food and nutrition services, they had over fifteen thousand parents sign up for their new app, uh, the School Cafe app. So that rollout went really strong and is working really well. Uh, for the seven days of school, uh, we had a four percent increase year over year for breakfasts. And we had a five percent increase year over year for lunches served. So food service is doing fairly well. On the transportation side, uh, as I said, we're reaching our goal at the ten day count now, figuring out how we are going to rebalance the routes to make sure that, uh, we improve our on-time percentages. But the good news is we started our class, uh, on Monday. We had twenty-one attendees in the class, eight drivers and twelve, uh, bus attendants. So, uh, those individuals, it's gonna take about two and a half to three weeks to get them into the system. But that's gonna be a big help and it's gonna get us very close to the number of routes that we have scheduled at this point. In addition to that, we've got a hiring event that's gonna be coming up on Thursday from nine to one o'clock at Wakeland. It focuses on operations. So hopefully, we've already heard that we may get a couple more bus drivers out of that group as well. Um, on the construction side, I think you'll be happy to hear that Palmisola Elementary School has been advertised. Uh, we're gonna be shortlisting the firms for both the construction managers and for the architects, engineers this week. We're gonna be interviewing them on the thirteenth of September. Uh, so you should see by in the last board meeting in September, our request to start negotiations with those two firms. So that's the last of the, uh, COPS projects that's moving forward and we're pretty excited about that. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Rinaldi.
Yeah.
Wouldn't make any fun if I didn't ask any questions, would it, Mr. Rinaldi? So, you know, we, you and I talked a little bit about, like you said, there's always with fifty, however many buildings we have, there's always gonna be issues with air conditioning and things like that. Do, do we have a process over the summer to kind of check the systems periodically, make sure they're working as opposed to just firing them up on, you know, five days before school and going, oh, it doesn't work? Or I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and then really none of our campuses ever go into unoccupied mode, which would be shut down. We have, because there, there's a, a very light load during the summer, but we're still cycling the chillers, we're still working the air handlers. Uh, one of the nice things at one of our elementary schools, we were a little suspicious about the chiller for that school. So we brought in a rental chiller and sure and a half, sure, it, it went down a week before school, but we were already prepared. We had a rental chiller under contract and was on site within a matter of a couple of days and we got it up and running. So, uh, we never shut anything down. We're cycling, we're using our energy management systems to see if we're getting readings. And also during that time, we're replacing filters. So we're, we're making sure that the filters are clean, that the coils are clean and that things are operational during the summer. That's the goal for maintenance for those eight to nine weeks.
And we have personnel that do that, we have like a whole HVACs. I imagine we have HVAC, electricians, we
Yeah, and we, we have both a combination of in-house staff and we partner with a lot of, uh, outside contractors as well. So it, it's kind of a mix because, um, it's hard to find trade labor, um, because we get outpriced. But yeah, so it's a mix of in-house as well as contract labor that we use.
And so if you had to guesstimate over the summer, there are a hundred people involved in, in doing that kind of work, two hundred, how many people do we use between our own personnel and the
Between our personnel, um, we're probably in the seventy-five to ninety range, maybe a little bit under a hundred. Now, one of the big things we do is we do a lot of grounds work during the summer a, as well, trimming trees, uh, bringing bushes back, uh, remulching and things like that as well.
And is that a combination of our employees plus contractors too?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just trying to get smarter on how, on how things work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, instructional, Mr. Jensen.
Good evening, Chair Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong. Um, I just want to echo Mr. Rinaldi's appreciation for our faculty and staff at our schools. It really has been a tremendous start to the school year. And I got to spend the start of the school year at Palmview, um, which was absolutely magnificent. The campus was beautiful, um, the teachers and administrators there had that school running like a clock. Students got to class quickly and got, uh, right to learning. It was really a, a wonderful environment to be in on the first day of school. And since then, our instructional leadership teams have been walking classrooms all over the district. Me and my team have been at Onico and Manatee Elementary this week. Um, both schools are fully staffed with teachers and we saw strong instruction, engaged students and, um, just really great learning during this first week of school. Um, we're thrilled to see that focus on grade level learning objectives and, um, we're gonna be continuing to visit schools to support teachers, um, throughout the year. I've scheduled visits at all of our schools and I'm looking forward to seeing them all over the next few months. Um, along with the start of school, we have our, uh, we're really emphasizing our focus on early literacy and the science of reading. So, uh, we've started our scope of work with the UF Lassinger Center. Um, this includes the United Way First Grade Para Program, um, and those paras participating in the program receiving their initial training with UF. Um, they've started administering phonics screeners to their cohorts of twenty first grade students at each school. And they're gonna be, begin delivering small group lessons, um, once that is complete. We're also set to begin science of reading professional development with all of our, um, elementary administrators in October. And those literacy trainings will continue throughout the year. Um, we've also contracted with Chapter One who will provide one-on-one phonological awareness and phonics tutoring to K and first graders at four schools. Um, we've hired tutors and those tutors have had their initial training and are set to begin August twenty eighth with the students they will be working with. Additionally, um, the county commissioners, um, approved the installation of a SOAR and four story walk at Lincoln Park. And, uh, this initiative is really fabulous. Um, SOAR and four is gonna be putting up these placards all over, um, Lincoln Park. And the story that they'll be telling is a walk in the forest. And, um, families will be able to kind of go from station to station throughout the park, um, going through the story. There's even an app that has a QR code on the placards that let you, um, interact with the story in multiple languages and gives families literacy tips, which is just, I think, a, a wonderful community, um, opportunity around literacy, thanks to our SOAR and four team. Um, and speaking of community opportunities, we have a few coming up. We have our, um, post-secondary education night at, uh, the MTC main campus on State Road Seventy. Um, that's gonna be where students and families can visit admissions representatives from a variety of post-secondary options. Um, dozens of colleges, universities, technical colleges, get information on, uh, their programs as well as, um, potential financial aid opportunities. And we also have the Manatee Technical College Open House and Career Fair, which will be October fifth, um, from six to eight at the main campus as well. Um, people will be able to tour the campus, meet counselors, watch program demonstrations and learn about financial aid options as well. So thank you very much.
We got a couple people, uh, let up, Mr. Tatum was first.
Good evening, Mr. Jensen.
Good evening.
So you mentioned teams of twenty going into schools for literacy, could you, or did twenty students, so I just
Correct, so that program, um, with, uh, the University of Florida's Lassinger Center, they're training, um, para professionals from eight different elementary schools. And those paras are working with, um, twenty students at each site. And so they have kind of targeted literacy, uh, cohorts at each site that they're delivering that with.
Great, sounds like, I just, my mind drifted there for a second and I, I needed to get that all in my mind and what was happening there. And then the college night that you had mentioned, not the MTC night, but the college night, when is that gonna be again, please?
The post-secondary education night is September eleventh from five thirty to seven thirty PM.
Okay, would, would you please do me a favor and just send me, I assume it's probably on your calendar, maybe invite me from your calendar? That way I can get the, the time and the location and that kind of thing, I'd appreciate that. I might like to attend if I'm available.
I would love that. And, uh, for the public, um, I believe the information's on our website as well.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
I will echo when there's events that maybe that we should be aware of. I went to that last year, it's very well attended, uh, a lot of colleges, not only in Florida, but out of state too, come to that. Is that the one we're talking about, the college second, yeah?
This will be my first one, so
Oh, okay.
I'm looking forward to seeing him there, but I, I hear really wonderful things and I know our team has a lot of effort.
It is, it's, it's quite the, quite the event, to be honest, you know, it's very well attended. Um, I have a question on, um, say, this was brought to my attention, okay, not through district anymore. A kindergartner who is well-versed in numbers, colors, letters, goes to class and students and peers aren't quite up to that level. This parent has worked, uh, very long with their child to get them ready for kindergarten, for kindergarten. And the lessons that they're getting, this student is well-advanced of that. Do we have a process that they can be tested and maybe placed into first grade? I'm not sure what that process is or how we do that.
Um, I would, I can get some information on that and follow up with you and this parent in particular. Obviously, our teachers are, are instructional experts, they're used to having a variety of levels of student in their classroom. And they, um, you know, we try to provide them with the tools and training so that they can differentiate instruction for the individual, you know, students in their class, particularly at elementary through things like, you know, stations and centers and all, all of the different, um, tools and techniques those, uh, master teachers that we have use. But, um, for students who are, who are particularly exceptional, I can get with our, our team on that side of the house and follow up with you and that parent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, and this again is coming from, uh, a student that's in our district and they reached out to me on another platform. And I'm like, uh, I'll find out because that's what we're about. If we're, we have students that's advanced, then let's capitalize on that and team them up, maybe even to help with kids that are not. So that, that's all I wanted to ask about, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman, uh, and board members. Um, good evening and, uh, first of all, thank you, um, for your support of the consent agenda tonight. There were fifteen action items that allows the staff to continue the, the business of the district. Uh, I will highlight that several of the items on tonight's agenda, um, addressed the, um, district's statutory requirement to provide a continuum of mental health supports, um, to students, um, who, um, need those services. Um, and so that included some funding coming into Manatee from the state and then the contracts necessary to expend those funds. Um, I want to echo, uh, Mr. Jensen and Mr. Rinaldi's, um, thanks to all of our employees for a, a, a really great first day of school. It will, it will never be perfect, there are always going to be, um, maintenance issues that, um, that, that are fine the day before school, that creep up the first day of school. There, there, there's always going to be traffic and, um, routing efficiencies. Um, but really our, our, our schools, uh, looked immaculate on, uh, day one. Um, I, I commend our, our principals for their leadership, um, our HR department for continuing to, um, onboard new employees right up through, uh, the, the, the first day of school to get, um, more people into classrooms, um, overall, again, a, a great first day. Um, board members, um, I am, um, continuing my school visits, um, that really started in, in pre-plan. Uh, and, um, to date, I've visited sixteen of our schools and I have, um, schools seventeen, eighteen and nineteen on the calendar for tomorrow morning. Um, and just, um, continuing to get out and watch our students in action, uh, meet our teachers. Two groups that I'm, um, interested in beyond sort of the, um, regular, um, conversations with principals and, uh, our classroom teachers. Um, I've had an opportunity to visit several of our cafeterias to watch our, um, uh, our dining teams, um, uh, do their work. Um, incredibly efficient services, uh, and, um, kids moving through the lines quickly so that they have time to eat and then get back to learning. Uh, and so thank you to all of our cafeteria teams. Uh, and then also, um, a, a, a real shout out to, um, all of our law enforcement officers that are, um, on our campuses, um, as well as our guardians. At every single visit that I've done, uh, just walking around campus, I've run into, um, either the, uh, the, the deputy, um, or the guardian out on campus. Um, and, you know, doing their, um, just regular general supervision. Uh, and they are an impressive group of people, uh, that are protecting our kids and our employees every day. So, uh, thank you to Sheriff Wells, Chief Bevan, the other, uh, municipal police chiefs who are, uh, providing, uh, law enforcement officers. Uh, we're, we're so happy to, um, have them on our campuses, interacting with our students and, and keeping, uh, keeping, uh, all of our folks safe. So, um, so thanks to all of them. Um, couple of other, um, updates, um, I previously talked about the Day of Giving event. I previously talked about the Day of Giving event that is co-hosted by Carl Reynolds Law and ABC 7 Suncoast. That was done on Thursday, August 3rd and our staff received the results of that supply and fundraising drive on that single day. $12,500 donated from Carl Reynolds Law to the Manatee Education Foundation. All of that money goes to impact, teacher impact grants to spark innovation in the classroom. And, and thank you to Mary Glass as well for supporting that effort. And then additionally, that day, another $4,500 was donated directly to the school district and that doesn't even include the in-kind value of all of the supplies that were dropped off by community members that day. So, again, just very grateful for the community support of our schools and students. And finally, Board Members, I'll mention, we have some exciting groundbreaking events coming up and these either are already on your calendars or will be soon. September 8th at 8:00 AM, we are breaking ground on the Hale Middle Construction Project that you've approved and then October 6th at 9:00 AM, we're scheduled to break ground at Tara Elementary and you've done a series of approvals for that project over the last three meetings. So, exciting to see all of that work underway and celebrating the, the start of progress on those projects. Thank you.
And Dr. Weisong, at the event last week at the Chamber of Commerce, that you spoke on, you did a great job. You mentioned, and, and I don't know if we talked about this at the board meeting on Tuesday, I think, because our meeting was in the morning, but we had some walkthroughs and some, I'm not exactly sure what the department was, the safety department that came through. Typically, they don't come that early, but it was day three or four of school and we passed, you know, with flying colors. Can you explain this a little bit, so the public knows a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman, for reminding me about that. So, on our, I believe it was our third day, maybe our fourth day of school, we had an unannounced visit from the Office of Safe Schools, which is a Florida Department of Education office. Their specialists do unannounced visits to school districts and by unannounced, I mean, I, I didn't know they were here. We, we get word when our first principal lets us know that they had a visit. And they are, of course, spot checking for compliance with all of the school safety regulations and that day, personnel visited 12 schools, that nine district-operated schools and three charters, looking for compliance list items and all of our schools were in full compliance. And so, I think that's testament to the board's investment in safety and security. It's testament to, again, the, the commitment of our, our sheriff's office and our local law enforcement, making sure that at no point are we understaffed at any of our schools. And then, also to Paul D'Amico and Patrick Bartholomew and the rest of our district safety leadership team. So, we're, we're proud of those efforts and we know we have to get safety right every single day, but that was nice validation that, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Excellent. Mr. Tatum was let to speak as well?
I'm sorry, I think I had that from, from the last time around.
Never mind. Off the hook. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation and for board comments tonight, I've got Messenger, Tatum, Foreman, Spray, and myself. Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, I only have two things. One, every year, when we get the uniform testing calendar, I always like to compare our minutes to the minutes from, minutes of testing from the year before. And this year, from K to 12, the amount of testing minutes has gone up by 300 minutes. But that is not the district, that is the state. The district actually went down in every single grade level except for two and so I really want to commend the district on reducing the amount of testing minutes. And I do understand, after talking to the superintendent, the reason why is there's another additional test. It's going to be a writing test, but it's just, it's just more minutes out of a classroom spent on testing and it's another 300 minutes from K to 12 that. So, I just wanted to say that, I think I say it every year, compare. I always like to compare and I always like to compare how much the district is doing and how much the state is doing when it comes to testing. And then, the second thing I have is just that I thought that the superintendent did a wonderful job at the chamber lunch and I just wanted to say that. I thought you did a great job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Mr. Tatum?
Well, good evening. Just a few comments. I'll get through them quickly, I hope. Again, thanks to the, all the school system employees. I mean, you're out there, you're making it happen. It's been smooth. That's, that's not us up here doing that. That's the people down in the operations and the daily basis in the classrooms, the guys in the 95-degree heat, making sure those HVAC systems are running and stuff like that. So, keep up the good work and then that leads me, while you're doing that work though, make sure you be safe. One thing about safety that I like to bring up this week is to tell any teachers or administrators or even students that are watching that it, really emphasize this see something, say something idea, that we need to make sure that we're not, we're more worried about people not getting in trouble than we are about keeping ourselves safe. And there's a, there's a line between being a snitch and running around and looking for people that are doing things wrong, but when that, you know, when that hair on the back of your head stands up, when, when there's something in your mind or your heart that says, "I really ought to talk to somebody about this," say something and pass that along to your students, you know? Tell them this in class and, you know, just give them examples of things that could happen if they let things go by, whether it be with weapons or guns or anything like that, that something really bad could happen and that they could prevent it and they could be a hero, so to speak, or a heroine. If you see something, say something. It's more important to keep us safe than it is worrying about getting people in trouble. Nobody wants to see people get in trouble, but the number one priority has to be safety, passing that message along, especially to our students, because they're really going to be our eyes and our ears on a lot of things. And then, finally, I wanted to talk about the dress code a little bit. I think all of us might have received a few notes about that. Certainly, it's, it is in our code of conduct and it is our policy, but I would encourage the parents and the, and the students to work locally with their schools, with their principals and maybe even their SACs to try and resolve these, these problems because they are individual to schools and even though we have an overall, overall policy in our code of conduct, some principals will enforce it a little stronger, some might do it a little weaker. Again, we're always open to getting those emails and you can call me and contact me anytime you want about any issues that are going on, but, you know, I can't change it individually. None of us can change it individually. It probably would be better addressed as locally as possible with local leadership to try and get that done. If you, if it doesn't work, then great, then elevate it up. You can always bring it to our attention, but you will probably have better luck trying to get it done at a local level with a SAC and a principal and coming to some local resolution. So, that's just a point. And that's probably true for any kind of issues that come up at a local school, trying to resolve them locally, because if you elevate it to us, it just has to work its way back down through a chain of command, so to speak, as opposed to if you address it locally, you'll probably get a quicker and a more local response. So, just some advice to people as you're trying to work through issues with your kids and your students and those type of things. And then, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Spray?
To your point, safety over secrets. Don't keep the secret, do the safety. So, I'm going to coin that, safety over secrets.
I like it.
I, too, will talk about the dress code. We do have a policy. It, it applies to all of our schools. It's not tailored to one school or another. I would actually say that's the policy. Not, it's different at this school and different at that school. This is the policy. And we did get a lot of emails and it was even in the news, so I'm, I'm looking at that policy and I, I want the people to know that I don't want our students to feel like we have to dress them down so bad. We have policies in place because somebody went over and above what's acceptable. So, we have to have policies or they will be tested by students. So, however, you know, the article and the picture that we got, I thought was a little excessive, in my opinion. And again, I'm only one person here. I'm not down at the level, but what I saw was a little excessive, but that's just me. I did go to the football game at Manatee High and got to see the new turf. It's, I actually have a little snippet of it in my purse and I'm keeping it as a souvenir. It's exciting to be out there for, it's, we're all about education, we're all about everything else, but the sports and the other things that we do in the district and, you know, I, I told someone there, it's an army of volunteers to make those things happen. To the person holding the little markers for the goals and, and the little number sign that was out there, the battery ran, ran out, all of that. And, and the student involvement, there was so much student involvement up in the media area and a call box and, and it was just, it was really refreshing, to be honest with you. I mean, you ever want to decompress from all of this, go to a local sporting event and that will help re-energize you. That's the way it did to me, anyway. But I also wanted to do a shout-out to those who are retiring. Mr. Roberts for 30, almost 35 years in ESE Student Services and, yeah, that's a lot. And then, Teacher Hearing Impaired, 40.3 years with, in education. I'll say thank you, Deborah, for your service. I don't want to botch up your last name. And then, of course, Custodian, Ms. Lee, for almost 25 years. I mean, these people, we, we praise everybody about the service they do on the start of school year and all of that. We also need to look out for those who have, you know, put their time in and I want to say thank you to all of them for all their service and it was a smooth start to the year. I didn't want to run into any of the schools because there was so much activities going on and will echo what Mr. Jensen said about Palmisolo, they got something special going on up there, I'm sorry, Palmview. They have something very special up there at that school and the staff are so dedicated and I got the chance to talk with them right before school started, so I just want to say thank you all for a good meeting and onward and upward.
Great. Ms. Foreman?
First, I want to clarify, may I dialogue with Ms. Spray?
Sure.
Cut off a piece of the turf?
No.
No, it was a trimming.
There was a trimming and I...
And sew it together.
And when they do that, it's a little piece that was on the field and I'm like, oh no, is this a maintenance problem? And I was quickly assured it was a trimming, so.
And you have, you took it?
I took it.
Mr. D'Amico?
I took it.
Take your part, please.
Yeah.
Theft of government property.
$1.25.
There you go. There you go. So, all right. Just making sure. I missed out on Dr. Weisong's lunch at the chamber because I was on my way down to Key Largo. Somebody had to do it. And, you know, it was a, a, a meeting of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards and this was the annual meeting to develop a legislative priority list. And the way it works is the districts that are in that consortium come together, look at last year's priorities, new priorities, and put together a list. It will come back before, I haven't gotten the, the, the final version that we worked on, but hopefully, I'll have it by Friday, but they'll, we come back and the board must vote on whether to accept it or not and we have, each district has a chance to look at it and go, no, I don't like that one and if anyone doesn't like that one, it comes off and, and it's off the, it's off the list. It's a, it's a very long list, so, you know, but it, it is certainly comprehensive. Lot of really good discussions about what's going on and it, I echo what Andrew said, that this is not going to be the year for fixes of prior bills. It's the same people in the same seats, in the same committees and the same leaders and so, chances of any backtracking or fixing are, are pretty slim. So, so, it will be an interesting one. They will have, the consortium will be in Tallahassee for the legislative days and do, just as they did last year, where, with the, where they have a conference room where legislators come in. So, instead of scheduling meetings, going out to them, you know, they come in and they'll help, you know, with, with setting up meetings, but I think we found, based on what we experienced last time, that it, you know, it'll be more effective to meet with our legislators here locally. So, but I do plan to go because of the consortium and the, and the meeting, so I'll be putting in for that on, on our request for funding. Anybody who wants to come with me? Absolutely come, you know, but...
January, February.
Um, shoot.
Maybe a little early, the session's early.
Sessions early, I forget what date it is.
I think last, two years ago was January.
Yeah, I've got, I've got it somewhere.
It was kind of cool up there.
That's right, it was. It was, so. But anyway, and also, at the consortium, we had some really, I had some really interesting conversations with a few of the sponsors and some unusual things and I'll share all of those with Dr. Weisong. You know, obviously, we don't make any purchasing decisions, but just a few things I wanted to put in his ear, you know, in case, in case there's an interest. And, but it was, it was a very good time. It was a very good trip and I did get to go out on a boat and see the mangroves that they teach some of our students. Not, they, they don't have any Manatee County schools going down there, but it was really good. I felt like we accomplished a lot, so. And I thank you for letting me go. And thank you to the teachers and all the staff, all the people in the cla, in, in the schools. Great, great start to the year. Love hearing, hearing it and sit, watching the videos of, of the kids. Lot of excitement, so, and that's, that's why we're here, so. And I'm happy to be part of it. Thank you.
May I ask, is there significance with this thing back here?
No.
Um, I'll be quick, ditto to what everybody has said. Thank you to the staff, obviously, leadership here, but all the way down to every single school. You know, from everything that I've heard, it's been pretty flawless and, and there's always going to be some tweaks and things, but I think that, that, that just shows who we have here in the district and who works for us and, and who is putting this, the, the school year together, because it's a monumental task to, to end in June and you flip around in two, two and a half months and you got a whole nother school year. So, I want to thank everybody that, you know, we had some shady meetings, executive meetings earlier today. Thank you for that. I know it's, it's a lot to ask for, for staff to deal with that and then, obviously, come back, back here to tonight, to Dr. Weisong. You know, not only was the chamber event great and, and you did a great presentation there, heard a lot of feedback from there, but just from, feedback from multiple sources, I know you're, you're going around meeting schools and meeting different people around the community, et cetera, heard nothing but, but positive things. So, really appreciate you diving in. I know it's a fire hose and, and you're getting, get a lot of information, a lot of stuff thrown at you, but heard nothing but great things. So, keep up the good work. We appreciate you. And to that, we will see everybody Friday. Have a good evening. See you soon. See you soon.